Five Planning Commission meeting to order at 7:02 and we'll start out with roll call.
Leanne Kesch Marsky, Woodford Drive.
Vinnie Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake and Shannon.
Jim Johnson, Weddell Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Jason Karthi, Planning.
Approval of the agenda.
Move through the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Minutes from previous meeting on March 12th, 2025.
Move to through the minutes of the previous meeting of March 12th, 2025.
Second plan.
All in favor? Aye opposed? Any public comment right now from anyone? Any of our two public? Not at this moment. Move on to new business, 6A private poultry urban residential zoning district discussion. Jason?
Well, I would love to turn it over to Commissioner Winslow, Trustee Winslow. This was something that she requested that the Chair add to the agenda, so we have. I went through my files from the last time that we discussed this and remember that we had a public hearing on it and had overwhelming or the majority of the folks that were here were against it in Trowbridge Park at the time, the Platte area. But we did make adjustments to the ordinance to allow it as a special use in our other residential zoning districts. So, I guess it's a question of, you know, given the economy, the cost of eggs, the things that we've done already to try to, or that were even in the master plan that were proposed and of course that would take a zoning adjustments, but the discussion items that we've had with regard to our ability to affect housing affordability, it may be a time to take a look at it again and I think that's what Trustee Winslow wanted to have on the agenda was to have that discussion again and if he wanted to direct staff to resurrect those old files and maybe bring, bring something to the Planning Commission for consideration. You also have in front of you tonight a number of different items, but the first one, the one that's on top is an article that was emailed to me today or yesterday, I can't remember. But basically even the state's talking about allowing this under, not under the right, well, under the Right to Farm Act. But, you know, this may remove local zoning's ability to control private poultry anyway. And in there, there's also some discussion in another House bill that discusses some of the arts and things that people can do at home instead of having those be special use permits, those would also be permitted by law. I thought it was a good idea too, quite honestly. Although if you remember, you know, some of the hinge points in the past were, you know, no roosters pretty much in Trowbridge Park if you were considering it. We had a, I think, a threshold on the number of hens, given the property size. And even in this proposed legislation, there's a minimum of 10,000 square feet, which is a little bit less than a quarter acre. So, an acre is 43,560 square feet, a quarter acre is 10,890 square feet. So, ballpark, it's in there if we were to stay congruent with the proposed legislation. Furthermore, I think they had to be in cages. But some of the people that were complaining, you know, about, you know, attracting coyotes, other vermin type of animals that can be kind of a nuisance, does the benefit of being able to produce eggs override those things. That's something for you guys to contemplate, but that's a general background on the last time that we looked at it.
I just emailed you a copy of a news article that just came up at WCMQ 1019. And it's about this topic. And there was an interview with Nora Weinhardt, who's the veterinarian for the State of Michigan. And she points out that because of the avian bird flu pandemic, or whatever you want to call it, that's infecting the country, that this is spread by migratory waterfall. So that anybody who wants to keep chickens, if they go, for example, to Prescott Isle and step on some goose poop, or anywhere, that you would step on poop from a migratory waterfall. Her recommendation is you go home, you take your shoes off, you take your clothes off and change clothes and that's how you prevent this avian bird flu. So, I don't know. I think, I was amazed that we would want to think about doing it in a small, in a small area, you know, of intense populated area, rather than just keep it like we have it in rural residential and resort production, I guess.
Scenic residential?
Scenic residential, yeah. So, I think it's a health problem. And that's just my, my opinion.
So, I'll share a little bit about how this came to be when I asked Jim to put it on our agenda. So, two people within the last week have shared that they were buying chickens to put in their yard. They're Trowbridge Park residents. They were just going to do it. And so, a person called me and said, can they do that? So, I, like Jason, sat down and found this nice grad that we have and I said, no. They live in urban residential and it says no. Oh. And I think Eric's probably gotten calls from people asking if they can have chickens. I hope someone's calling and asking, not just assuming they can. So then I went, are you smiling? So then I went online and I looked at what the city of Marquette does. They have to fill out an application, they have to pay a fee. I think it's $75 to apply. So, there's some tracking of who has chickens and who doesn't. They can-
No roosters in the city.
Correct, they can have four hens and no roosters. They have to have a place for them and it has to be enclosed. And I think if we think about urban residential, which is basically what Trowbridge is, that we would want to be consistent with the same kind of rules, if you want to call them rules. Because you want your animals safe. And if you want to have chickens for eggs, I'm not opposed to that. I, my parents had chickens. I lived on the corner of Fair and Ontario, you know, we were right in the middle of town. So, I think we need to put that out there, have, you know, some discussion, do a public hearing, if that's the case. But I do know the city has it, but they are tracking it. And I would hate for us not to track it and people to randomly think they can have chickens. And they do attract animals, okay? For tho- who has chickens, anyone? No? No, I don't think our audience has chickens. Yeah, they do attract animals, so.
Someone just posted a couple of weeks ago, a webcam, you know, of their, off their front porch into the driveway or whatever, of a wolf in their yard in Trowbridge Park. Did you see that?
Nope, but I'm sure they are.
And it, and it was a wolf, it was not a dog. If you blew it up and you looked at it, it was real and you could see the snow in the picture and whatever.
Yeah, so, it's kind of like, no one's here tonight to ask. I think people just assume they can do it.
Well, it's your job as planning commissioners to, you know, you all come from diverse backgrounds to have your pulse, your figure on the pulse of the community. You may more so than the layman in the audience or at home in Trowbridge Park. But it's up to you whether or not you want to direct staff to put some items together for you to consider. And then I believe it was kind of the same process last time where, you know, we had these ideas, we wanted to loosen up regulations on those. And when it came time for the public hearing, we did have feedback that led the Planning Commission to, you know, not allow them in urban residential, but to make those adjustments in the other districts.
I can't remember, Jason, if we, do they, are they supposed to be contained? Or do they allow for free range?
The last time we had it together, it was contained, yeah.
Cause there's, there's a home on 492 across from the convent that's got free range. And on the corner of Grove and 492, as you turn to go down the hill, that house right there has free range and chickens too.
Yeah.
Well, they probably-
Full disclosure, there are folks that have them that we are not aware of. And that includes probably the urban residential district as well.
Well, I thi-
Is this a solution in search of a problem?
Well, I always ask you to just make sure that if you do amend the ordinance, that it's something that staff can enforce, you know? I mean, I appreciate the article that you shared with regard to the, you know, avian flu. I'm not sure how that translates into domesticated, you know, domestic chickens.
Well, that's, she addressed it. She said if you're going to have chickens, if, this article was about, you know, this and was from, you know, about, it mentioned Marquette, city Marquette allows it, isn't it? But she addressed that. She said, okay, if you're going to have chickens, then you got to realize that they can get this avian bird flu and it's very easily transmissible by the droppings of migratory waterfall, which we have a lot of them around here. I mean, go to, go to Prescott Isle anytime, you're, you got to watch out where you're stepping. So, I mean, I just, I just wonder, I mean, we have it in our ordinance and it's in certain areas. And, I mean, I used to, when I was living in Indiana, I used to buy my eggs from a woman who had it. But they had it, you know, very well laid out. They had to dig down three feet to put a fence down three feet so the fox couldn't get in. And, you know, I mean, it's, but to think that this is going to be in a densely populated area, it kind of, I don't know. I just, that's my first take on it, but I could be convinced otherwise, I guess.
I kind of think-
If it's, if it's, you know, something that people are interested in, then maybe we do a public hearing to hear what they have to say about it and what they want. And then maybe at that time to talk about, well, if you currently do have chickens, you're supposed to have them contained, it's not a free range deal. Kind of educate a little bit. And that can be brought up as well about the, you know, the droppings of, you know, migratory waterfall. There could be some discussion on it. I, I mean, I can't imagine a family today and wanting to make scrambled eggs for the kids before they go to school. I mean, the cost of a dozen eggs is, is just ridiculous. So, yeah, I can imagine there's a lot of people looking into it. And Choctaw Township must have something.
Yeah, most communities regulate and allow and regulate them. But trying to think of the densest population area in Choctaw would probably be off the highway there, right along the main street. I mean, those are the things that we can look into for you and give you that additional information to help you make your decision on whether to go to a public hearing or not. But, I mean, it sounds like there's interest in hearing more about it, at least.
How would you initiate it in terms of a public hearing? What would be the predicate to have a public hearing on this issue? If nobody's, if nobody's petitioning or applying for it, is it our place to?
Well, we don't-
I don't want, I mean, I live out in the country, I could have one, but I don't want it.
But we don't-
I just assumed by the store.
We don't have an application process today. We don't have anything.
That's what I'm saying.
It was, it was difficult for me to find what I needed to find to share with that person. And they, I think, I think without having something, people are just going to do whatever they want. That's kind of what we have going with something sometimes. So, I, I mean, I think you need to say to everyone, here's our, and whether we say here it is, we already have it. It says no. Or whether we say, what do you want us to do about it? It's kind of like, you know, it's kind of like blight, if you want to think about that. We said to everyone, what's your main issue here in our township? And they came back and said, blight is one of our main issues. So, we moved with it, right?
So, now is the price of eggs?
I don't know, I, I, you know, I can tell you a dozen of eggs is, if it, even if it's $9, it's still a protein bargain, okay? But, whatever, yeah.
Well, it might be also an opportunity to educate people on some of the health hazards of, you know, if that avian flu continues to permeate.
Sure, how would you, I mean, I just, I'm not, I'm not opposing-
Yeah, the process is just like anything else.
How would you do it?
We put something, language together that would be inserted into the ordinance. The Planning Commission agrees to that and then we schedule a public hearing like we would for any other zoning types of them.
So, would you then want to have a vote tonight as to whether or not we should even do this?
Yeah, I, I need consensus in some way to, you know, it's starting to get to be the busy season construction wise.
Yeah.
And, and demo wise, as you'll hear later on tonight. But I certainly don't want to waste my time working on something that the Planning Commission's not all in on, if that makes sense.
I guess my thought is if we could get some, if there's ordinances for other townships in the area or are you not in the area, just so we could look at them and see, you know, if there's some different things in there that we're overlooking or not thinking about.
Yeah, the last time we looked at it was like 10 years ago, so I'm pretty sure things have changed and there's, you know, maybe those ordinances that we looked at previously have been a massage in some way to better suit their conditions.
Well, there must been some kind of, there must be some kind of a process because Cornox applied for that and-
Yeah, it's a special use permit.
We had a hearing for them. But I mean, as far as an application process, there, there must be something-
In that zoning district, yep. So, in rural res and in scenic res, there is a special use permit. So, just think like anybody in your guys' zoning districts essentially would have to apply for a permit. You know, provide the narrative on how you're going to take care of them. We notify all the neighbors, there's an article in the newspapers, a public hearing scheduled and then yes or no, you can have chickens. So, understandably, some people probably don't want to go through that process and just ask for forgiveness instead of permission, which-
I think that's what they did.
Well, that, yeah, we brought it in after.
Yeah.
Cause they were roaming around on Brickyard Road. Which is one of the tenants of the governor's initiative is free range eggs. So, you know, it's a little bit different than what the state's looking at. But, you know, as a resident and as somebody who cares about our residents and wants to see them thrive, I thought it was a neat idea to bring up again. We know that it can happen in the city, which is much higher density than Trowbridge Park is. So, in my view, anything that we can do to assist their residents in affordability or, you know, I'm a proponent of having gardens and, you know, salsa gardens, whatever food you can produce on your property. I mean, I had a question about what Rosa's Doggo initially was back in the day. And I believe it was a gas-
It was a store.
A store?
It was a store.
It was a neighborhood store.
It was our corner store where we-
So, I went and read probably, well, I read the entire-
Malaschios.
Well, it was way before that, it was someone else's, yeah.
Initially it burnt down and it was rebuilt as a brick building. And it was the brick house for a while, right? Then it was Fat Boys, then now Rosa's. So, this goes beyond my 50 years. But in doing so, I read through our history of the township and all of those residents that put all that together back in the day for the sesquicentennial. And it was really interesting how, you know, people had animals all over the place and, you know, they're different conditions, obviously. But I think it's something that's been a part of this community, if you will, that particular community for some time. I mean, I think after I started in 2011, Manager Gerard told me at some point that there was a cow in Trowbridge up until-
Well, there was a horse. I don't remember the cow, but there was a horse in my neighborhood.
I don't think you would have minced his animals there, no pun intended.
Well, maybe there was a cow somewhere.
It was a cow.
Yeah. Yeah, the horse was there a long time.
You know, we've gotten so far, I'm not going to go on a big rant about food, but I myself have been trying to eat more protein and eggs are a big part of that. And it is super expensive to eat healthy and if we can do anything to, you know, help our residents.
So, do you want a motion or do you want to just do a consensus?
I kind of wanted to ask everybody else to see what they thought.
Bethany has a good chance, please speak.
No, I'm interested in learning more. I definitely think that we need to get ahead of this curve because I don't think it's going away. I think just more residents are going to get them and ask for forgiveness later. So, if we're kind of ahead of it a little bit, that will only help.
Well, my best friend, I went in the Marines with, Tom Fury, who moved into Trowbridge, had, you know, four of them in his yard and I told him he had to get rid of them. And here he is on the phone with me saying, you know, my girls are crying because they have to get rid of chickens. And, you know, we're trying to teach them a life lesson on raising animals and food and, and you're going to do this? And I was like, yeah, I'm going to do it too, because we don't allow it. So, you know.
What kind of, so if, right now with, where it's allowed in our township, are there specifications for site plans, setbacks?
I mean, yeah, if you put a structure up, right, it's going to have to-
Who does, who monitors, I mean, I'm just, like, is it the building department or county?
No, it's us. It's our department, my department.
Okay, so they submit a site plan to us with chicken coop?
Well, they would demonstrate on a, on a property where it was going to go and, yeah, I mean, there, some of them are kind of like little Taj Mahals, I mean, they're pretty neat. And some of them are not, you know, it depends how whole hoggy you want to go on chickens.
Yeah, people put their webcam, I put a webcam in there so that they can watch them and send it to their grandparents and whoever watch it. It's a pretty, it's a pretty cool thing.
Maybe we could have a surplus of eggs in our community, have them handed out here at the township hall.
Around farmers-
As they go bring it to Trowbridge.
Okay, so-
I can see one negative thing to this.
Well, there are some negatives.
Well, no, I, to the local farmers, if you kind of do this, it kind of hurts, cuts into their business a little bit too.
Like who?
Or the local farmers are, I don't have a list, but-
Little, little lake, little lake.
There are quite a few farmers around. I found all from the farmer's market at the DDA.
I would rather have our residents have their own food instead of having to even buy eggs from another source. I mean-
Oh, I'm not saying I disagree with that, but I'm just saying that that'll be one of the negative things that could be brought up.
Yeah, yeah, we can add that to the pros and cons.
Either that or, you know, it moves in a different direction where restaurants buy those eggs locally. I know Northern buys X amount from local producers. But they can't buy everything because there's not enough of a supply. You know, you can imagine how many college kids they're feeding, right, for breakfast or what they're making through the day that they might need eggs or whatever. Or, and produce, it's not just eggs, but I know that they have committed, which is really cool, X amount that they buy locally, but they can't buy everything because there's not enough of a supply. So, this would even be more, you know, maybe, so.
Chicken, laying chickens only have a certain laying life and then they become chicken fritters. I mean, it's just a fact.
It's a closed loop system, yeah.
They become dinner, Danny.
All right, so, in our next, next meeting, we'll, we'll bring back, maybe not like hard language, but we'll bring back some things to consider.
Or some examples from other?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, we don't need a motion, we'll just-
Consensus is fine.
Yeah, okay. All right. 6B, Michigan Association of Planning's Legislative Alert and Request for Action to Oppose House Bill 408-1 Discussion.
Let me just start by saying, if you have something that you want to be had, put on the agenda, which this should have been put on the Planning Commission agenda probably initially, but there was some back and forth in the office and it got put on the board agenda initially. So, I included that report on there just to give you the background. But effectively, I think it was Commissioner Ferraro submitted Michigan Association of Planning Legislative Alert, asking for communities to oppose an amendment to the Land Division Act, which would allow for 10 divisions of an initial 10 acre parrot parcel instead of the currently allowed four divisions as a base. Now, you can get bonus divisions for not constructing a new road or for consolidating the divisions and leaving 60% of the property as residual for common use, commonly referred to as a com- conservation type of subdivision. It didn't raise, I, you know, staff monitors these things and it didn't really raise my hackles. I'll say the same thing that I said at the board meeting and that is effectively, you know, somebody can subdivide a property four times right now. If you had 10 acres and you did it four times, that's what, 2.5 acres per, per lot. But if you're looking at an affordability standpoint, being able to subdivide that property 10 times, and this comes from the real estate sector, which lobbied for this. You know, it, it obviously would bring the cost down on the development. The only thing that I have concern with and probably what the APA had concern with is, is these more urban environments downstate where farmland is getting eaten up by residential development. There's always been that clash for at least the last 25, 30 years, where farmers are trying to hold on to what they have and they're just getting these, you know, immense amounts of money to sell their property for residential development. In a case like that where all of a sudden, you know, a community that has, you know, somebody has 10 acres, they develop it in a higher density residential under this app, you know, amendment. Then all of a sudden, the community has to extend utilities, you know, there's, there's, could be a strain on, you know, wetlands or environmental factors. But when I read this, I, I thought it was another affordability, housing affordability issue, which it is, if you read some of the proponents. In fact, MTA has legislation that was embedded into this act with regard to including a provision to allow municipalities or counties that have the authority, which we do, I review land divisions in the community, to have some time to process this. So, even if it went into effect, it really wouldn't go into effect until July 1st of 26. However, our zoning ordinance actually has certain parameters in it that would prevent some of this stuff from happening in most of our zoning districts. For instance, you know, most of the properties that are in Trowbridge Park are not one acre. They are less than that. But the rural residential district has a one acre minimum. And that's the minimum lot size for the county to be able to approve a well and septic system typically. And then scenic residential has a minimum of five acres. And then resource production, which we really only allow develop, you know, full-time houses on, on a special use permit. But even in rural residential, you have 150 foot minimum frontage or lot width. If there's utilities that run by it, then it's 120. So, it's a little bit less if you have water and sewer running in front of the property. The other thing is you have the ability to do a, and what we've seen more of lately is the planned unit developments and a site condominium. So, Blue Hare and Bluffs 2 was an example of a site condo. And the Heritage Silos is an example of a planned unit development. and the Heritage Silos is an example of a planned unit development. What this does do, I guess, if it went through, would kind of allow somebody to get by the subdivision act or the requirements of, you know, registering for a subdivision and that can be kind of challenging. But we also have our access control and land development ordinance, so we have a kind of an extra layer of protection there. And that states that anybody that develops attractive land like that has to extend utilities, like Longear was proposing to do, and put in their own roadways, so we wouldn't have to do that either. So, ten maybe seem like a lot, but in reality, if I had ten acres and I only developed forty percent of the property with my four divisions, I could get two more, so that's six. And then if I didn't, if it went off of, you know, where I live on Northwoods Road and I didn't put in a new road and all those divisions happen to be accessed off of maybe a private road, then I could get two more, so that's eight. So, I guess I wanted to explain that and maybe hear Danny's side of it, too, why he sent it or just, you know, maybe it got more traction than it needed to have, but it's something...
It was something that you should see.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we monitor these things and maybe I should make you aware of these when they're out there, I guess, you know, because we get the township insight and, you know, there's always a number of different things that are being considered.
How does this work, like, for example, in the resource production, where aren't there, aren't those minimum forty acres?
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's just say the timber company sells it to, puts it up for sale and some land development company buys it. What, and they want to build, and this is out where there's no public utilities, they would have to do septic and whatever, right, wells. So, what would that mean for, you know, well, I'll just give you the example that I'm concerned about. On the west side of Eagles Nest Road, there's a section, starts about halfway up between five-fifths where Eagles Nest starts at five-fifty and where it then rejoins, there's six-hundred acres, I think. It had been bought by, or it's up for sale anyway, the timber company who owned it is up for sale and some realty company called CLC is advertising it. And I think it's something like six-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars or something like that for five-hundred acres or something. Anyway, so I've had my neighbors up and down Eagles Nest Road. Oh, and the other thing that these dummies that have the real estate company did, they took a bulldozer and they went up this almost a thirty-foot incline and they got all these boulders that are just sitting there and it's, you can't, nobody can drive up it anyway, it's like a hazard. So, people are concerned. It caught people's attention, right? So, the question then is, okay, so let's just say some, you know, land development company buys it and decides to build houses out there. What would that, how would this land division amendment affect the number of homes that could be built up there? Highland, because one of the, because we have waterfalls that come down from that highland. We've got like maybe, oh, seven or eight waterfalls all along Eagles Nest Road and it comes down to a drainage ditch on the west side of the Eagles Nest through culverts going down to the lakeside where I live and where about sixty, seventy other homes are. And of course, that fills in a lot of wetlands and then eventually it seeps down and drains into the lake. So, the concern would be, all right, if you have a subdivision being built up there, of course, I don't even know how they would build a subdivision with septic, but, I mean, that's kind of what popped into my mind when I saw this. I wondered, whoa, how would that affect that area?
So, zoning protects that, from that. We do have a provision in the ordinance that does allow for a five-acre special use permit.
Okay.
But as far as the number of divisions that's permitted, that could potentially affect that. So, yeah, rural, excuse me, resource production would be the only district I can think of that we would be affected by. Of course, with a quick zoning adjustment, you could take the special use permit for five acres out of it and just have it straight forty acres, that's it. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. Secondly, we would not run water up to Eagles Nest Road and anybody who wanted to try to run water up Eagles Nest Road from, let's say, maybe the tourist park area, which is probably where it ends from the city, that would be an astronomical amount of money. So, there would be well and septic requirements there. And then with regard to degradation of wetlands or any environmental things, those go through the county and the soil erosion sediment control permitting.
It would be a stormwater issue because if every spring, when that snow melts up on that, I mean, we just get inundated down below. I mean, it's fine, you know, the wetlands take care of it and the property absorbs it. But to think of housing development up there, I mean, you'd have to have, you know, detention ponds, retention ponds and this and that, so...
Yeah, the soil types and all those things justify how it's treated, the amount of impervious surface and things that are put in. So, yeah, I mean, hopefully, I mean, we cross that bridge when we come to it, but there are things in place that cover those development issues.
I didn't really have an opinion on it.
Okay.
I was just, I thought I'd give it to you and say, hey, look, what do you think?
Okay, yeah, we took it, we took it to the next level. I think so. The question is, do you want, do you believe it's necessary for the township to send a letter in opposition of this?
You're the expert.
Well, in my opinion, would be that we don't.
Okay, too.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at the other tools that are out there for subdividing land, this really isn't, in my opinion, that much of an issue.
Okay.
I think it kind of goes against creating affordable housing by saying, "We don't agree with this," that it shouldn't be split into smaller lives.
Precisely, yeah, that's exactly what it would do. And so, the American Association of Planning, if you've noticed, I haven't gone to the APA conference in a number of years. That's a national conference that they have. Now, Michigan has a chapter and I'm, you know, I've been a part of it for twenty years. The Michigan Townships Association is really where we get our information from and really tap into what their opinions are on things. And so, yeah, they worked with the sponsoring legislators to incorporate some language in there that they thought was adequate, so... We'll leave it be, we'll continue to monitor it and let you know how that turns out, but for now, we'll put that on the back burner. But thanks for the email.
Okay.
And this is a handy table for you guys, too, like when you, you know, maybe save that one, put it in a file somewhere. But that shows you how land divisions are derived from the existing land division act. So, you have a certain number of acres and those are how many divisions you can get. If you just do straight divisions or if you want bonus divisions, you can see how they can add up quickly. Thank you.
Okay. Unfinished Business, 7A, Master Plan Update. Informational delay on that because of Lori's health conditions and...
Yeah, it's more informational than anything. I did use the survey, one of the questions in the survey for the board to look at, you know, how important blight was in the ordinance, so the surveys come in handy already. But essentially, yeah, I haven't heard from Lori. She's out till the fourteenth and I expect to hear from them immediately afterwards, but we have really until the end of the year to utilize our grant and so I don't see it as being too much of an issue. Once she is back on the fourteenth, it was anticipated that the rest of the master plan, not just sections one and two, which we've seen so far, but the rest of it would be available for us to review and get going on, as well as another steering committee meeting in May. So, that's it on that one.
Okay. Correspondence, 8A, Market Board of Light and Power Transmission Line Replacement.
Yeah, I've got a number of things for you today, additional things, too, that are on your desk there. But yeah, this is just informational. Trying to give you more information, maybe than you want, but these are things that come across my desk and want you to have a chance to review them, so... Replacing a line, adding some redundancy and improving it, so that's good to hear.
Is that on that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not an expert in it, but I did ask him to provide a brief summary. That email is included in the package.
Okay. Any questions about that, anyone? 8B, Michigan Association of Planning's Upper Peninsula Academy on May fourteenth.
Yes, my colleague in the city, Kenneth Stackelich, was able to rango Michigan Association of Planning to have a one-day kind of crash workshop here at Northern. And I'm hoping that all of our planning commissioners can go. And if you do want to go, let me know and I'll get you registered. And if you're unable to go, then we'll provide whatever information or take any swag we can get and mail back to you.
Can we tell you now?
Yes.
Okay, I want to go.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Dan, yes? Bethany, is that a schedule conflict?
Possibly. What day of the week is it on?
Wednesday.
Yeah.
We have a planning commission meeting at night.
I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it'll be interesting to hear. I mean, it's pretty much like going to a conference and the conference is coming to us.
Are we going to have much on the agenda for that week, do you think, for our meeting?
Hard telling right now. Things are starting to pick up, for sure.
Okay. All right, Linda, 9A, Township Board Report.
So, I was unable to come, but I did listen to the meeting and I was so excited that our blight ordinance was approved. I'm sure Jason was excited, too, and we got a lot of thank yous as a planning commission board for such a thoughtful ordinance and all the hard work. So, thank you to everyone from our attorney. So, that was like really great. I am excited to see how this is going to roll out and I think our residents should be excited about it. And there was a person at the meeting who spoke during public comment and his concern was blight in his neighborhood, so it was really pretty timely. There was also a presentation from the trail folks, I'll call them. They did their year report to us and the exciting part is the trail will be extended from the Casino to Lakonan Land and they seem excited about that. So, I'm going to go try it out, I hope, on my bike, on my pedal bike. No, I don't have an e-bike. On my pedal bike.
You will.
No. So, yeah, so I'm going to try it out. I think it sounds exciting. It is five miles, they said, so if I get tired, I'll just stop at the casino.
I'm not knocking your ability. I'm not promoting the industry because they sell more e-bikes than they do regular.
Oh, they probably do, yeah. So, anyway, so I think that was probably the highlight for our group. Yeah.
The rec committee did not meet. I keep waiting for the section of the master plan to get delivered so I can give that to them and have them look at it and see if there's any amendments or changes. I try not to waste their time, so we could potentially meet this month, but as of right now, I have nothing for them. I do, however, have a planning zoning report for you. Ready for that?
Sure.
So, if you haven't noticed, up on Venture Drive, the land clearing has begun for the VA home and if you've noticed, they left a lot of trees, actually. There was, well, there was quite a bit of clear cutting, but there was some selective cutting at the edges of the property and there were a few character trees, I'll call them, that were remaining, too, on the south side of Venture. They did leave a buffer as well adjacent to the Fish and Wildlife Building, which was nice and required. Well, not required because they apparently are exempt from zoning, so that's why we haven't seen, other than the site plan that we gave to you, that's already been bid out and ready to go. So, I've asked Roger for an opinion on that and he said he would only get back to me if they were required to have a site plan review, but I do not believe they are required. So, yes, the blight ordinance was approved by the board at their April second meeting. I did get a notice to the Mining Journal that will run on, I'm sorry, April eleventh and then the ordinance will be live thirty days after that, after the April eleventh. So, that gives staff time to put together a job description and to get an advertisement to hopefully hire that letter of term of employment, which would be, I think we were thinking about ten to twenty hours a week, probably closer to ten. We really don't need a whole lot from that individual, other than to just have a presence on the community, take some photos, come back, report what they saw and then generate some letters and get that process going.
Was that person funded by a grant?
No, the board actually put some funding together. As far as the CREEO or the compatible renewable energy ordinance and the workable zoning language for that, that's kind of getting a slow start, but I hope to have some kind of draft for you, probably the second meeting in May. It's going to take a little time to massage that sample language that I gleaned off the MTA site. And that'll be done with Roger, too, so I'm hoping that by the time it comes to you, it's something that's pretty close and ready to go. Today, we received a demo permit, actually four demo permits for 2712 S-41, 2702, 2680 and 2862. Those addresses comprise the Jasmine Restaurant site and Queen City Burger, the white building. So, that site is proposed to be demoed and I don't know if I told you this or not, but the plan is for, at the very least, a modern car wash facility, kind of like the ones you see in the bigger cities where they have like a subscription. It's, you know, it's a long building and, you know, you drive through it, but then there's proposed to be upwards of twenty vacuum sites and things of that nature, so I just said as long as the dryer is pointing out towards the highway and not back up towards Trobridge Park, we'll be fine with that, so...
Kind of like PDQ?
Yes, yeah, similar. Like a three-million-dollar investment, so it's pretty significant, plus the value of the land, plus the demo. The demo costs, one of them was ninety thousand on one address, so that's probably the one of the big long buildings. It's exciting to see that's kind of been, what did Lundy call it, an albatross today? And I was like, finally going to see some activity there, so that's exciting.
Is this a chain or independent or can't say?
That's a good question. I can't give you a firm answer on it.
Time frame as to when they want to build?
Well, they're pretty excited, yeah. I mean, I think that they now own the property under Beaver Land Management LLC. You know, they name them all kinds of cockamamie things. But that LLC now has the property and they're getting, they didn't even discuss a brownfield, they're just going after the demo because obviously demolition of antiquated buildings or functionally obsolescent buildings can be a qualifiable condition, but it's nice that we don't have to entertain that type of tiff and they're going after the project that way on their own dime. So, I'm anticipating a site plan probably later... So I'm anticipating a site plan probably later in the summer, yeah.
So there's already, so there's that, we have a car wash on the other side?
Yeah, he's proposing to turn that into a, a loggervan.
Is that right?
Yeah, so there's other things happening that.
And then there's another, isn't there another car wash right up on the hill there by Wildings?
Same gentleman owns both of them.
Oh, okay, so he's going to have two of them, or are they going to?
Not sure on that one. And then you've got the one at the old Marquette Mall as well, which is a similar type of building, but I don't know if you've realized how much it costs to wash your vehicle nowadays, but.
A lot.
When I first moved back here, I think it was like ten bucks, and now it's up to fifteen if you want the certain package or something, so, yeah. So that's exciting. And then you have in front of you as well tonight, a preliminary site plan of the golf simulator building at 420 Brickyard Road. Letters have went out for the public hearing, that'll occur on the twenty-third, and the use is permitted by right, but because it's abutting residential land use and residential zoning, it does require a public hearing. So essentially, we're treating it like a special use, but I did get a, one of the neighbors got, must have got their letter because he wanted to come in and see the site plan. I didn't feel comfortable emailing that to him today because you guys haven't seen it yet, so instead of you getting BLIGHT cited by somebody out in public, I wanted you to have a, an opportunity to at least see the site plan as it's proposed now. Some of the items that could change potentially are the parking and the amount, potentially. I haven't calculated those out yet. This was all presented by Ken Dillinger of UPEA. And then the driveway entrance location, obviously, we'd like to have that as far away from that intersection as possible, and they did a good job of that as proposed. So the existing driveway is closer to the intersection to the east than this, what's proposed here. And then as far as the neighbors go, I mean, you can see that they kind of hug the building up towards the Westerly property line. They are leaving the winrow of trees in place, and then all of the activity of, let's say, the parking and, you know, the entrance to the building, et cetera, that's all happening on the, on the east side of the building. So from an activity standpoint and from having a residential neighbor, in my opinion, anyway, it's a pretty good scenario. Obviously, we'll be looking at stormwater closely. The building length, if you remember, we did do some design standard amendments to a building that is longer than a hundred and fifty feet, so there are some, you know, kind of renderings there. There's a real nice rendering, I, I think it's going to look really nice, big windows in front, and, so, yeah, we'll, we'll look at those things and see if it requires an architectural break. I see they do have some natural light windows running along the top and bottom of the building, and does that qualify as an architectural break? I guess you could consider that to be yes.
So this, it's not going to be a driving range, it'll be, that's all, not all going to be open inside?
Yeah, they call it a simulator. I think Advantage, the workout place that was the Shunk building next to what was JT Shaft, that building also has a golf simulator in it, too. So they might have actually more than one simulator in there, but he's also proposing retail space and kind of a workout area as well, so. I, I think it's really neat, it's about a two point eight million dollar investment, and if you remember, this property was rezoned to allow this use.
Is this the guy, and I remember we did this and it wasn't, you know, but is this the guy that owns that junky little house?
Well, it was his property, and then he sold it. As soon as that zoning text amendment was done, you know, we have the deed, Janelle's got the deed that it was sold, and now Adam Development, who's the property owner and developer, he owns the property now. We've got some concerns about utility connections because we don't, I mean, I guess it's more of a question for Lenny, but those will be firmed up before. And I don't want to get too far into it tonight, I just wanted this to be out there for you. We will, any questions that, obviously, you have, you know, if you have something specific, let me know, but we, we hope to answer all those questions for you at, at the meeting.
I guess it's, I'm, I'm just kind of thinking that's not that much of a setback on the west side there, but you only need ten feet?
It's a side yard setback, yeah.
Okay. A stop when it was abutting residential, it'd probably be more than that, but it's just ten feet still?
Well, it is, it's beyond the ten feet, right? So you've got the ten-foot setback there, and then you've got that buffer row of trees. So it's more than that. But what we have to wrangle with, and we'll dive into that next week when Eric gets back and we get our development team together with the fire department and everybody else, is what type of buffer yard is going to be required, and then if they want it to be that small, you know, does that existing row of trees, which is probably more than three bushes and four shrubs per one hundred linear feet, you might want to just let that buffer yard sit as it is, because it's natural and it's there, instead of having to, you know, them to clear right to the property line and then just put back up these sparse little things that are going to take twenty years to grow, i.e. the rear end of the Subaru dealership, right? So we don't want to go through that again, and for them to allow or leave that, treat those trees there, I think, is, is a real advantage to us and to the neighbors. They provide better screening than most things would.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, it's creative use of the property. Obviously, they're not going to be reusing any of the, the house or anything that's going to get raised, and you're going to have a, a shiny new development there.
Anything new on the Longyear case, court case?
Not to my knowledge, no. And then lastly, just today, approved a new home at nineteen thirteen Langford Drive, and that is a nine hundred thousand dollar build. And our, in that PUD, so those, I believe the lots have, most of the lots have sold, and now, you know, the people are starting to come with their plans.
Where's Langford Drive?
It's that new subdivision that's on the south, I'm sorry, the north side of Grove Street, towards the west end of the golf course. You see the little.
Oh.
The silos.
Stand play, the stand play structures are on the street.
The Airbnb's on the street, yeah.
You gotta go over the hill to get to the.
Yeah, okay, that's what that is, Langford Drive, okay.
So, yeah, that's it, and then there's a couple other things that are exciting that can't quite talk about yet. Definitely is busier than it was last year at this time.
Any announcements? Is there announcements? And what about any public comment? Doc or Lynn?
As far as I know, Longyear's going forward as of about three weeks ago.
The cases or the project?
The project.
Oh.
Yeah, I told you that we did meet with them, right, and they were going to make some minor adjustments to perhaps some of the utilities and some of the driveways. I mean, there's a provision in the ordinance that says if it's too much changed, then it comes back to the planning commissioner. What they're proposing right now is not anything major, but when I do get those revised plans, I will definitely distribute them to you. But effectively, or density-wise, I, I think they're going to improve, as in to say that there's going to be somewhat less density in the initial phase.
So did the court case go away?
Well, we won.
Well, the first one, but I thought they were appealing it.
Well, that one was, oh, I don't know, they made, no, I, I don't think they can appeal from what Attorney Zappa said, that because they were outside of the timeframe to appeal.
For that one, but then there was.
And the second case involved whether or not there was a breach in the Open Meetings Act with regard to a zoning board of appeals member consulting with staff, whether it be myself or it wasn't me, with the, our township attorney. So I'm not sure on that, but when Roger, you know, usually when something happens, he'll send like a memo or something over, and, you know, I'll keep you apprised of all that when I receive it.
Okay. Well, that's good news.
It is, yeah, I mean, I saw a letter from, or a sad kind of email post from a female friend of mine who is at her wits' end. She is a professional in the medical field, she's a lifelong Marquette resident, and she cannot find a home to buy right now. And she put out a very nice letter on Facebook saying, if anybody knows of anything, she's getting outbid by investment groups, people paying cash on the spot, no inspections, you know, as a young professional and somebody who's getting, you know, funding from the bank, there's a different process that she needs to go through, and she's getting squeezed out. So, you know, those are the things that keep me up at night.
And there are many people in her same position.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, we, we need that housing.
And then Runavari's date is what, it's coming up in April sometime, were there?
Well, I think from what I understand, it's back in their court. So they did submit a purchase agreement. They indicated that it might take until September before they could close on the property, and everything's contingent upon their brownfield plan. So the board has.
Oh, so I'm talking, what did that, that didn't happen yet, then?
No.
Okay.
So the Township Board responded to the purchase agreement as they were required to, because they threw it in your court? And so you responded, because I remember had to be some corrective language put into that. And so what's the turnaround for them to respond?
Up to them. We left the September first date in there.
You did? Okay. I know there was some discussion about.
We had it blank, yeah.
Yeah, about maybe bumping that up, but I guess, you know, we've come this far.
So it could be a real busy summer and fall.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's good. Any additional comments by planning commissioners?
Looking forward to that new car wash. If you have a large vehicle, they never clean the back end of it. So those tunnel ones are awesome, and if that's what they're proposing to build, I'm excited about that.
Done? No? No, no, no? Okay, I don't either. So, oh, I know what I was going to ask you, sorry. Nine oh six, anything going on with that as far as Highline or whatever it was with the presentation and the new company?
Yeah, I don't know, Lynn, did, did Highline, did Highline get back to us about a presentation?
No. I reached out to them, the board said that they wanted a letter to go, so I emailed them and asked them, and they were all excited and said, okay, we'll send you a template. And the template had stuff like, yes, the township has worked with Highline for years and finds that they're very credible and good business people, and so I took that paragraph out, because we don't know anything about them, which is why I asked them to come and do a presentation.
Right.
So I typed a real generic letter, you should have it.
I do, mhm, mhm. So they.
They still haven't.
They haven't set up a time to come and present?
No.
Oh, okay.
And they said, yeah, we're anxious to come, and I said, okay, here's our meeting dates.
I think they sent out postcards to some of the communities, saying that there's high speed internet coming, and there hasn't been any response.
Oh, yeah, no, I did talk with someone about, I'll, I'll connect you with someone I talked to. Maybe, maybe that's the, sometimes it's the wrong, you know, sometimes it goes to one person and never moves on, right? Yeah.
Well, they're not the same ones that are taking over all the Ameritech lines or?
AT&amp;T lines?
AT&amp;T, yeah. That's different.
They put nine oh six.
Mhm, mhm.
Right.
Someone's taking AT&amp;T, though.
Yeah.
I did see that.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Is this our map that tells us what's going on?
Oh, yeah.